Councillor Baker. Councillor Ciomo. Councillor Flaherty. Councillor Jackson. Councillor Lamontina. Councillor Linehan. Councillor McCarthy. Councillor Murphy. Councillor O'Malley. Councillor Presley. Councillor Wu. Councillor Yancy. And Councillor Zachem. We have all present.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all councillors and guests to please rise. I invite Councillor O'Malley to the podium to introduce today's clergy. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask that all members and guests remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councillor O'Malley. Councillor O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a little starstruck today, and you'll see why if you haven't already. We're going to do a presentation for two of my running heroes shortly. Therefore, it's appropriate that, as it's my turn to pick the clergy, I'm picking my dear friend, Sister Margaret Leonard. Many of you know I'm a Boston Marathoner, as is the council president. In the last two marathons I ran as a member of Team Project Hope, raising much-needed funds for a wonderful resource in the city of Boston. Project Hope, which began on Magnolia Street and is now thriving on Dudley Street. This is an organization that has helped literally tens of thousands of women and families with job skills, with life skills, with parenting skills, with housing opportunities. And it is the singular vision of a woman named Sister Margaret Leonard who came to Boston 30-plus years ago and has made this a better city. The unofficial slogan, or I would even say the official slogan for the Project Hope Marathon Team is "Run for the Nun." And you will soon hear from the nun for whom we run, someone who really is an absolute visionary, an incredible leader in the city of Boston. If you haven't had an opportunity to tour and to visit Project Hope, make it a point to do so. Elizabeth Maglio, our dear friend, many of you know, former dot rat who first brought me into the organization about 10 years ago, would be happy to give you a tour just to see some of the incredible programming that happens there each and every day. And it's also one of the ways that funds are raised for this organization is through the Boston Marathon and through charity. And thank you to many of you who've supported my cause in the past. So without further ado, please join me in welcoming Sister Margaret Leonard, a true hero in this city and just an absolutely remarkable human being.
Thank you, Matt, and thanks to all of you for inviting myself and us to be here. We're really delighted to be here where many wonderful things happen for the city of Boston. So I would like to begin by asking us to just take a moment to enter into the depth of yourself in this place. Touch the deepest part of yourself, the place where you are most in touch with the divine or with that center and source from which you draw inspiration and energy that calls and sends you to bring the best of who you are to the work of this body and to the work of this day. And let us be conscious this day of the presence of Rick and Dick Hoyt in our midst this morning. Let us remember and draw strength from them, from their spirit of courage, compassion, endurance, and commitment. So let us pray from this depth within us. In the name of all that is in us, that has the courage to dream a healthier, less pragmatic society. In the name of all that is in us, that has the compassion to see the needs and vulnerabilities of many in our community. In the name of all that is within us, that has the commitment to believe that every single effort made on behalf of what could be matters. May your hearts and minds be open to receiving even more this day as you begin it together, as you ready yourself for the work that is etched into your hearts and into the lives of your constituents and in the written agenda that undoubtedly is before you. May courage, compassion, and commitment deepen within you, inspiring you to build community with one another in this wider city and in the country that holds us all. Let us invoke that divine spirit to inspire us to bring the best of who we are to this day. Holding this reality and call close, may we become verbs. May we hope. May we love. May we do peace and make it real. Make it our destiny and make it now. Amen.
Thank you, Sister Margaret Leonard, for your inspiring message and for your continued contribution to our city. I just, I was thinking while we were praying that the nuns, the sisters of all the orders have made enormous contributions to this city for hundreds of years and have never been truly recognized for what they do. And they continue to do this enormous work in their own way, directly with the people. And Sister is one of the greatest examples. So thank you, Sister, for being here. Thank you, Councillor O'Malley, for inviting the good sister here. And now the council will lead us in the project of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic whose bishop stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal, everlasting.
At this time, Councillor O'Malley will make a presentation to the Hoyts. We'd like to thank Sister for her kind and inspiring message. And we will do this at the front. So.
You know, among my fondest memories growing up in this city was going down to Councillor Ciomo's district, Patriots' Day every year, first with my dad, later as I got older with my friends, to watch the Boston Marathon. And it was always such a special time when we were standing there cheering on the spectators. You'd hear, it was almost like a wave coming of applause. And that was signifying that Team Hoyt was about to pass by us. Many of you know the story, know about these two men, these two incredible athletes who have defied the odds and are among the most accomplished and successful athletes in the running community. And their story began when Rick was 15 years old, and there was a local road race in their town, and he wanted to run it with his dad. And I believe it was a five-mile race, and his dad pushed him. And afterwards, Rick said he felt great, he wanted to do it, he felt like he wasn't in a wheelchair, he felt like he didn't have a disability. And he doesn't. Because let me tell you, this guy is the heart and soul of Team Hoyt. That launched an absolutely remarkable career, over 1,100 races, 32 Boston marathons, close to 80 marathons, six Ironman triathlons. And they are just, really encapsulate the spirit of what it means to be a runner, what it means to be a team, a father-son bond that is absolutely unbreakable and just is a lesson for all of us. They are just two remarkable individuals. 2013 was supposed to be their last Boston Marathon running as a team, but they were stopped about a mile from the finish line because of the attacks of that day. So this year, 2014, was their last time running as a team. And it was remarkable, you know, I've said I've run with many races with them and always well behind them because they are a heck of a lot faster than I am. But just to have that after so many years, there's a beautiful statue of the two of them right in Hopkinton, which I would always use as a source of inspiration every time I'd do a long run or on those race days. And they are just absolutely incredible athletes. So Dick and Rick will not be running the marathon this year. Rick will be running it, so make sure you're down there cheering him on, as well as the members of Team Hoyt. And I just wanted to read, before I turn the microphone over, a brief resolution. And this is sponsored by me, Councillor Matt O'Malley, and co-sponsored by every one of my colleagues. If you'll indulge me for just a moment. Whereas father-and-son marathoners Dick and Rick Hoyt have become known worldwide as Team Hoyt and have completed 32 Boston marathons beginning in 1981; and whereas the Team Hoyt story began in 1977 with a 5K and has continued to inspire millions of people for more than three decades; and whereas Team Hoyt have participated in more than 1,000, it's actually close to 1,100 races, including marathons, duathlons, and triathlons; and whereas Team Hoyt has been recognized with dozens of awards and recognitions from numerous organizations, foundations, and individuals, including President Barack Obama, and were inducted into the Ironman Hall of Fame in 2008 for completing six Ironman competitions; and whereas in 1989, Team Hoyt formed the Hoyt Foundation to raise awareness of their story and inspired America's disabled young people; and whereas Team Hoyt planned to make the 2013 Boston Marathon their last race but were stopped at mile 23 by the tragic events following the terrorist attack; and whereas Team Hoyt triumphantly returned to complete their last Boston Marathon in 2014 in memory of those who lost their lives and were wounded on April 15, 2013. Therefore, be it resolved that the Boston City Council names today, Wednesday, October 22, 2014, Team Hoyt Day in the city of Boston. And be it further resolved that the Boston City Council recognizes Dick and Rick Hoyt for their achievements and for serving as symbol of strength and perseverance for the city of Boston around the world. Ladies and gentlemen, there are fewer people who exemplify the notion of Boston Strong than these two athletes. Please join me on this Team Hoyt Day in recognizing the quarterback, Dick Hoyt.
Good afternoon, everybody. Rick and I are very happy to be here and we're honored to be here on a special day that it is today, and it's something that Rick and I will never forget the rest of our lives, there's no doubt about it. I just thought I'd talk a little bit about Rick, so you'll know why he's in a wheelchair and he can't talk and use his arm for his legs. I want to take it back to Rick's birth, it was June, July 10, 1962. And Rick was a very active baby, and when he was being born, he turned himself over. And the umbilical cord got twisted around his neck, and he was in septic position, it took a matter of minutes before the doctors could get at it and untangle it. Well, that caused a lack of oxygen to Rick's brain, which caused brain damage, which is cerebral palsy. At the time, we knew there was something wrong with Rick, but we did not know exactly what. So the doctors made an appointment for us to see a specialist when Rick was eight months old. We took Rick to the specialist, and they did all kinds of tests. And the tests come back, and they're very negative. They said, "Forget Rick, put him away, put him in an institution, he's going to be nothing but a vegetable for the rest of his life." Today, Rick is 52 years old, we still haven't figured out what kind of vegetable he is. But on the way home from that doctor's appointment, Rick's mother and I, we cried. Then we talked, and we said, "No, we're not going to put Rick away. We're going to bring Rick home and bring him up like any other child." And this is what we have done. Rick has been mainstreamed and included all of his life. Today, he's 52 years old, he's graduated from public high school, he's graduated from Boston University, he lives all by himself in his own apartment, and Rick and I have competed in over 1,100 athletic events in the past 35 years. Now, you've probably all wondered, how did Rick get to high school and college if he can't talk? Well, we knew Rick was very bright. We could tell by looking in his eyes that he was paying attention, and he understood everything we were saying. So we taught him the alphabet and the numbers, and we did a lot of reading with Rick. And then we tried to get him in public school, and they said, "No, he doesn't understand, he won't be able to learn." So we went and met some engineers from Tufts University here in Boston, and we talked to them, and they said the same thing, that he wouldn't be able to learn. So we told the engineers to tell Rick a joke, and they told Rick a joke, and Rick backed up laughing. And they said, "Wow, maybe there is something there." So they said, "If you get us $5,000, we'll build a communicating device for Rick." Now, you've got to remember, this was 45 years ago, and $5,000 was a lot of money. But the Hoyt family raised the $5,000, we gave it to the engineers, and they built what was called the TIC, the Tufts Interactive Communicator. The engineers were coming to our house, and everybody's betting one of the first words Rick is ever going to say was, "Mom's saying it's behind mom and me to dad." No, it's going to be "Hi, Dad." Well, the Boston Bruins were going for the Stanley Cup. The very first words he ever said was, "Go Bruins." So we took Rick with his TIC to the school department, the principal of the school took him in a room of teachers, and they left us outside because before, they were saying we were answering for him. They asked him questions, he answered them correctly, and they had to accept him in public school. And then after that, the federal government came out with a grant, and they were building these TICs so other people could use them to communicate. Now, probably the most challenging event that we'd done, all we've done, happened in 1992, when Rick and I decided we wanted to run and bike across the United States. Our goal was to leave San Monica Pier in LA and end at the Marriott Longawalt in Boston, covering 3,770 miles in 45 straight days without taking a day off. And other people that had done it, but they'd done it on their own, said that that wasn't possible. They said, "You have to take at least a day or two days off a week." Well, Rick and I thought just the opposite. We thought we were going to get stronger as we came across the country, and we did. And we finished in exactly 45 days at the Marriott Longawalt on a Thursday night. That Friday night, the Red Sox were playing a nationally televised game, so we ran from the Marriott Longawalt into Fenway Park through the Green Monster. They said that they'd let us speak for two minutes, and I says, "Well, what can we say in two minutes?" They said that if you say that Fenway Park is accessible for the disabled, we'll let you speak for four minutes. So we did our four-minute presentation, we stayed and watched the game, the Red Sox did win that game. We went home that night, got up the next morning, and went up to Philly Mont and did a triathlon. So you can see that we've had a great career. Everybody knows now that we've run 32 Boston marathons, and the city of Boston is so important to Rick and I. And as you can see, John Hancock is our sponsor, they're the ones that provide us with that full-size bronze statue down at the starting line in Hopkinton. And also, if you go to the airport down at Terminal C, you'll see a miniature statue down there. So it's very important, and I want to thank John Hancock again. As you can see, these are the hearts that John Hancock gave up this year to everybody at the marathon, and we all love Boston. And we're really looking forward to seeing Rick and Brian run in the Boston Marathon next year. So I want to thank you all very much for this special day, and have a great day. Thank you.
Well, we want to thank Councillor O'Malley for that inspiring pre-game show that we had here today, to have the Hoyts here and the good sister. We should be doing some good work here today. So without any further ado, I want to thank our guests and move on with the agenda. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing, hearing, no objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Docket number 1594, message and order authorized in the city of Boston to accept and extend funds of $1,750,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Department of Fire Services for the Boston Fire Department Training Division.
Docket 1594 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety.
Docket number 1595, message and order approving appropriation of $467,804 from the Edward Ingersoll Brown Fund for projects that will ornament the city's streetways, squares, and parks.
Docket 1595 will be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs.
Docket number 1596, message and order authorized in the city of Boston to accept and extend funds in the amount of $237,500 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Department of Fire Services for the Boston Fire Department's Hazardous Material Response Team.
Docket 1596 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety. Madam Clerk, could you please read 1597 and 98 together?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1597, message and order authorized in the Environment Department to accept and extend a grant of $170,000 from the FIRE Foundation to support the Green of Eight Boston Fellowship Program. And docket number 1598, message and order authorized in the Environment Department to accept and extend a grant of $150,000 from the FIRE Foundation's Climate Preparedness fellow to prepare for the foreseeable effects of climate changes.
Docket 1597 and 1598 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment and Parks. Madam Clerk, please read dockets 1599 through 1602.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1599, message and order authorized in the city of Boston to accept and extend the FY14 Fort Security Grant Program funding in the amount of $144,908 from the U.S. Department of Homeland for the purpose of providing supply items to port areas for the protection of critical port infrastructure from terrorism. Docket number 1600, message and order authorized in the Police Commissioner to accept and extend the FY15 Traffic Enforcement Grant Funds of $140,000 awarded by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. Docket number 1601, message and order authorized in the Police Department to accept and extend a grant of $60,000 from the U.S. Department of Justice Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force Program for the purposes of supporting crime prevention and law enforcement, working directly with the United States Marshals Service. And docket number 1602, message and order authorized in the Police Commissioner to accept and extend a grant of $23,500 to fund the FY14 Paul Coverdell National Forensic Science Improvement Program grant funded by the National Institute of Justice and passed through from the Massachusetts State Police.
Docket 1599 through 1602 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety. Madam Clerk, could reports of public offices and others?
Would you like me to read 1603?
Yes, docket 1603 through 1606, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1603, notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city on October 6, 2014 until October 7, 2014. Docket number 1604, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the agreement between the city of Boston and Walnut Avenue Apartments Limited Partnership pursuant to Chapter 121A, Section 6A of the Massachusetts General Laws. Docket number 1605, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of September 24, 2014. And docket number 1606, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 1, 2014.
Madam Clerk, please put docket 1603 through 1606, place them on file. Reports of committee.
Docket number 0389, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on February 26, 2014. Docket number 0389, ordinance creating a commission on the status of black men and boys in Boston submits a report recommending the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
The chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Councillor Flaherty, on docket 0389.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the request of the lead sponsor, Councillor Tito Jackson, I'm withdrawing the committee report and asking that this matter be referred back to the Committee on Government Operations. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Docket 0389 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, please read docket 1517.
Docket 1517, the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor, to which was referred on September 24, 2014, docket number 1517, in order for a hearing to review the potential closure of the Radius Specialty Hospital in Roxbury, submits an interim report which will remain in the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor.
The chair recognizes the Vice Chair of the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor, Councillor Murphy, on docket 1517.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 1517 is the docket that was assigned to the Radius Hospital closing back on September the 24th. At the end of the council meeting, Councillor Jackson got up to speak passionately about the fact that there was no notice given to the workers or the folks in the neighborhood or the patients that Radius Hospital was suddenly closing. And we had a short recess and decided to hold a public hearing on the matter here at the city council. We have held two separate hearings, actually the same hearing, a continuation of nearly four hours of testimony to determine how the closing occurred, whether the decision could be reversed, how could we ensure that it didn't happen again, and what might be done to mitigate its impact on both the employees and the community. The Radius Hospital had two facilities, one in Quincy and one in Roxbury, a 207-bed unit with more than 260 staff. They were given one day's notice by the hospital. They were given one day's notice by the hospital, September 22 to September 23, notice that they were closing. And it was a rehabilitative and extended acute medical care facility located at 59 Townsend Street in Roxbury. Our committee hearing process, we invited individuals from Radius Hospital, from South Shore Hospital, from Partners Healthcare, Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center, Santander Bank, and Healthcare Finance Group, SCIU 1199, and the Mass Nurses Association to examine the circumstances that led to the closing, the closure and patient relocation plans, impact on the neighborhood, and efforts to assist Radius employees with healthcare and reemployment. There was also considerable public testimony on concerns from employees and the negative economic impact to the community. While there's more to be examined, and we have adjourned that hearing but are picking it back up on Thursday, November 6, the committee will reconvene a working session and/job fair for the folks that were working there and are now unemployed. So, this is, in my memory, the first time that the city council is actively engaging in a job fair promotion for people in our neighborhoods that were suddenly left out in the street. And we're encouraging all councilors to come by that job fair. We've invited representatives from the Human Resource Departments, from every medical center in this city, to come and meet these folks that are on the unemployment line and perhaps give them a new home for employment. In terms of the facility, I know Councilor Jackson will talk to the reuse of the facility. This kind of got out, the horse got out of the barn before the city council got involved. But we're trying to catch up where we can and maintain both for patients in our neighborhoods, our neighborhoods themselves, and the workers, the fact that we'll stand up for them and they have a forum here. And I'd like to turn it over to the lead sponsor, Councilor Tito Jackson, at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Councilor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to first thank my colleagues who attended the hearing. I want to thank Council Murphy for chairing the hearing as well as the co-sponsor, our additional co-sponsor, Councilor Charles Yancey, for his support. This is a personal component. My father actually passed away at the old Jewish Memorial Hospital. There are individuals who we've spoken to who've worked their whole career, literally someone who worked 37 years at this facility. The average tenure of a nurse at the facility was seven years. In the acute care environment, that's considered a magnet hospital. There are great things that happen when people are able to work together over the course of time. And so, to have over 400 people lose their jobs with one day notice, and also to have 150,000-square-foot facility squarely in the middle of Roxbury in this real estate environment, those are both crisis situations. And I want to, again, thank the council for acting quickly on this matter. We have seen 15 people get jobs so far, and Council Murphy and I will be hosting the working session/job fair, and that's exactly what we need to do. I think it's important that the council step up, roll our sleeves up, use all of our Rolodexes to bring in the folks who can reemploy the great people from this community. We also need to look at this as a potential canary in the tunnel of what could happen in the city of Boston. And one of the things that we need to make sure of as a council is that hospitals in lower-income parts of the city of Boston, as well as our region, are not displaced and moved to areas where there are more commercial patients. We want to make sure that the highest quality of healthcare is provided to every single family in the city of Boston, and that there is not a run on these types of facilities in the city of Boston. One, from the perspective of care, because every person who worked for the hospital spoke to not only what they had to deal with individually, but the first thing, and I was on site the day they made the announcement, everyone there was concentrated on the needs and the issues related to the patients and to their families. They were all still focused on that. So, I think it's critical that the council take a lead role in exploring, do we have a run on hospitals in the city of Boston? And are, is there a displacement of hospitals that are offering free care for those who are offering care to commercial patients? It's something that we, as a council, need to really look at. And again, I also, again, want to thank the chair for setting up another time. So, this will be the third time in a month that we're dealing with this issue. And I just think about the faces that were in the audience, of people who had dedicated their whole life to taking care of folks at this great institution that will no longer be able to work there. But also, now, we need to step in and need to give them an opportunity to work, to take care of themselves, and to make sure that everything is made as right as possible. And I would also note, lastly, that this component of one-day notice in the Warren Act is actually an unacceptable practice. It is a thankless response to people who've given over 30 years of their life, worked in the community to take care of folks. And it's something that is unacceptable, and we will hold people to account for. And again, thank you for this opportunity to speak today, Mr. President, and I look forward to the working session. And we also, again, invite every single counselor to be out there to support these folks. They are part of our city's fabric and our environment and live in all neighborhoods in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Yancey, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to congratulate two of my colleagues, Councilor Jackson and Councilor Murphy, for their leadership on this issue. I've learned a lot in my few years on the Boston City Council. One of the things I've learned is that we can actually initiate change, and we can challenge decisions made by insensitive individuals such as the people who run Radius. I don't think I'm going to be contradictory, Mr. President, but I believe that the closure of Radius was an illegal act simply because they did not conform with federal law and local ordinances, which require 60 days' notice. I don't think that's unreasonable, Mr. President. As you know, I study financial statements every day, and I've had the opportunity to look at the financial statements of Radius, and they have more than adequate current assets on hand to deal with their current liabilities for well over that 60-day period of time. So, I'm not sure why they made the decision when they did, but I know that it was an immoral act, possibly an illegal act, and it's incumbent upon the Boston City Council as a legislative branch of government to advocate for and to defend workers in the city of Boston, patients in the city of Boston, as well as its residents. And this abrupt closing really challenges us to step to the plate. That's why I'm so proud of Councilor Jackson and Councilor Murphy for stepping up and offering leadership to this body so that we can take some action. It's not the first time. Back in the early 80s, I hate to date myself, but it is what it is, in the early 80s, a similar action was taken with regards to Colonial Meatpacking Plant. Now, I hate to compare a hospital with a meatpacking plant, but they abruptly announced that they were closing, and it was the intervention of the Boston City Council, along with the Flynn administration at the time, that at least delayed the actual closure and provided opportunities for some negotiations to take place so we can have a smoother transition. But this is more important than that, because we're talking about the lives of the patients as well as the dedicated nurses and medical staff who have sacrificed dearly just to provide those services to their patients. So, I look forward to the working session. I believe there's more that we can do, and we can also challenge partners and some of the other huge medical institutions to step up to the plate and make sure that our patients are taken care of, and the hard-working professional employees have a softer landing than what Radius saw fit to give them. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Yancey. Docket 1517 will remain in the Committee on Economic Development and Planning and Labor. Councilor Yancey, just quick recess. The council will be back in sessions. Madam Clerk, matter is recently heard for possible action?
Docket number 1332, order for hearing on food insecurity in Boston.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Councilor Presley, on docket 1332.
... to examine the scope the food insecurity is having in the city of Boston, to explore potential steps for the council to take to address what is really a growing problem in the city. Food is among the basic right we have as human beings, and in a time when we are collectively producing more food and are more cognizant of nutrition than at any other point in our history, there is simply no excuse for allowing our neighbors to go hungry. Still, food insecurity is a problem affecting nearly 12% of households in the Commonwealth and is a daily reality for a broad spectrum of our neighbors. Council O'Malley and I had a very robust discussion with those who came to testify, and it was clear to us that there are gaps, particularly for children under the age of five. They are either going hungry or are receiving malnutrition because their access to healthy and fresh foods is limited, and the same is true for their parents. It was also underscored to us that many of our seniors are living on tea and toast. And again, this is also a service-delivery gap, that very often when we're talking about the face of hunger, we are only talking about children and not also our seniors. And of course, in recent years, one would have not considered our middle-class families to be vulnerable to food insecurity, but increasingly so that is the case. These consequences are layered and include malnutrition, diabetes, obesity, cardiovascular and neurological conditions, and increased risk for learning disabilities, and overall poorer health, education, and employment outcomes. Now, while we have many city and nonprofit agencies working to address food insecurity, we heard resoundingly on Monday that much more can be done to coordinate services and to cover the existing service gaps, some of which I alluded to a moment ago. So, with that in mind, I recommend that this matter stay in committee. Council O'Malley and I will be convening a working session in the coming weeks to continue this important conversation and to make sure that we are talking about and addressing the issue of hunger in a real way, not just during the holiday season, but year-round, because the need is every day, and it is growing. And it's just critical that everyone in our city has access to enough healthy food to sustain them. And so, now, I will turn it over for a final word to the sponsor of this hearing order, my dear friend, District 6 City Councilman Matt O'Malley.
Thank you, Council Pressley. Councilor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. 700,000 residents of the Commonwealth are considered food insecure. To put that number into perspective, that's the entire population of the city of Boston plus 50,000 or 60,000 more. The image of hunger that many of us, you know, are accustomed to would be the young child with a distended belly in India or Ethiopia or Bangladesh that we saw. While that image sadly still exists, the new face of hunger is the young boy who's overweight or the elder who doesn't have access to healthy food. Now, we can solve the problem of hunger for very little money. And one thing, one trend that has been happening over the last decade or so has been that cities are stepping up to the plate to do what's right. In this city, we are doing some very good things. Edith Murnane testified the other day. She's our food czar for the city of Boston. She does yeoman's work each and every day. But we can't do it alone, and fortunately for us, there are some tremendous nonprofits that are here. Catherine Demato from the Greater Boston Food Bank was here, representatives from Love &amp; Spoonfuls, which works with supermarkets that may be getting rid of perishable items a day or two before their expiration date and redistributing those to lower-income people. There was another group that talked about some of the great work they're doing with wholesalers as well. So, one of the action items from this was to convene a working session. We identified some problems that exist, some systemic problems that a simple change to policy could affect, as well as some larger issues, to work together. Council Pressley is absolutely right on this. We're doing some good things for school-aged children. The BPS has stepped up considerably with a lot of pressure from this council over the last couple of years and certainly with the leadership of Mayor Walsh. But there's other things that we need to be doing. So, this is a problem that we can solve. It's the right thing to do, and it can be affected, we can effect significant change for very little money. Thank the chairwoman for her leadership on this issue. Look forward to a working session and really putting some good concrete steps in place as we go forward. I'll close by saying, one of the things that was the most heartwarming from the hearing the other day is that many of the nonprofits and many of the activists and many of the advocates who appeared said they had never met one another. They were aware of their, the organizations, but had never had the opportunity to just interact face-to-face, share best practices, and figure out ways that they could support one another. So, that's been a nice benefit of this, and look forward to many more productive conversations and action items to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Docket 1332 will remain in the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities. Madam Clerk, please read docket 1334.
Docket 1334, order for hearing to discuss displacement, community stability, and neighborhood preservation.
The chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Housing, Councilor Baker, on 1334.
Thank you, Mr. President. Monday night, we had an active hearing. The house was packed. It was clear in that hearing that we have more work to do, so I wish to keep this matter in committee, but I also would like the lead author to speak on it, Council Jackson.
I thank you, Councilor Baker. Councilor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank Council Baker for his leadership on this topic. We can call it community preservation. We can call it displacement, neighborhood preservation, but the real issue is gentrification in the city of Boston. We have people who are being pushed out of the city based on, in particular, corporate landlords like City Realty. We actually had them here, and many of the people whose lives that they have negatively affected in our city who've been pushed out. One of the folks, Mr. Beckwith, who testified, he's a blind gentleman. One of the folks, Mr. Beckwith, who testified, he's a blind gentleman, and he came to testify in favor of City Realty. And I found it very interesting that what he was, and I, he seemed like a great gentleman, what he was thankful for is that they helped him move out of the unit that he had lived in for years, and now he lives in affordable housing in Cambridge. It's amazing to me that we have folks who are coming in to all parts of the city. This is not, this is agnostic to neighborhood in the city of Boston, and people are buying distressed realty, real estate, meaning things that were in foreclosure, and turning them into cash cows. And I have no problem with people making a profit, but I do have a problem with someone's rent going from $1,600 for a four-bedroom to $3,200 for a four-bedroom. I do have a problem with seven businesses in Councilor O'Malley's district possibly being displaced had Councilor O'Malley not stepped up and actually set up a mediation so that these businesses wouldn't be displaced. I have a problem with people who come into neighborhoods and say that they're fixing the neighborhood by displacing people in our community. We have a crisis on our hands. The city of Boston as we know it has a crisis on our hands, and it's up to the council to take a leadership role in getting our arms around the solution. We got to hear the voices of people who are affected by this problem, and many of us and our families are affected by the same upward pressure on rents in our community. And so it's really important, Mr. President, that we continue on. Councilor Baker has committed to doing another hearing, looking at how our council can step forward and take a leadership role here. I want to give credit to Mayor Walsh for his housing report and the policies that he's pushing forward on, but I think it's up to the council to also step forward and take a leadership role. We heard many potentially illegal and also regulatory issues that need to be taken care of at our hearing, and we want to make sure that we are there for our community. We want to make sure that we are there for families who continue to be displaced in the city of Boston. And we want this city to not only be for the beautiful million-dollar condos that are being built in the downtown area. We want this city to be for families. We want it to be for working people, and we have to step forward and push forward on a solution, and we also have to partner with the community. And I want to thank City Life, Vida Urbana, Right to the City, and the Chinese Progressive Association, and also all of the other organizations that were there. I also want to thank my colleagues on the council, and I also want to thank the over 400 folks who filled this room, as well as the Curly Room, to fight for their families and to fight for the city of Boston that we all want to see, which is a city that represents people from low income to those who can pay market-rate rents, one where workers can actually still live in the city of Boston. And that dream that we all have is, that still lives with every single family here and that people are not displaced. So I thank, again, Councilor Baker, all of my colleagues for being there, and also the lead sponsors. And lastly, I want to thank the people who came and testified, who lost their house, who were evicted from their homes, who were speaking about really intimate details of their life that for most are embarrassing, that for many people get finger-pointed at them, folks are disrespectful and hurtful things are said to them. They stood up in this room and actually stood up for thousands of other folks who weren't in this room. And I just want to thank each and every one of those individuals who came forward to tell their story that is all too common in the city of Boston. And we have great, some great people who own properties and are landlords, and we want to give them credit where credit's due, but we also want to let folks know, and for those who aren't doing right by our community, want to put you on notice that unacceptable practices, intimidation, and doing wrong by people in our city will not be accepted, and the council will not stand idly by as that happens. We will continue to fight. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Zagan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Councilor Jackson and Councilor Baker for leading such an informative and important hearing. I know that Councilor Baker's had quite a few hearings like this dealing with these scofflaw landlords that can be a scourge on the city of Boston and all of our neighborhoods. And to continue that work, to make sure that folks have a forum to be heard when they've been abused by their landlords, when they've been pushed out, when someone takes over a condo association board and doubles the condo fees in the hopes of pushing one of the other owners out, is just such an egregious example of capitalism run amok in the city of Boston. It's important that this body and the city government take a stand and say that this is not something we're going to allow. As Councilor Jackson has said, you know, you can make a lot of money being a good landlord in the city of Boston. Actually, probably offhand, unless you're inventing the next Facebook, can't think of a better way for people to make money than by being a good landlord in the city of Boston. But that means respecting your tenants. That means not changing the rules midstream. That means not trying to force people out of so-called distressed properties that are just taken over by outside investors. So I think it's an important conversation to continue having, to make sure that we're going to have a city that not only, to people are respected and treated well by their landlords, and when they have complaints or health and safety issues, that they're addressed by both the city, and I think we have a great partner in the Inspection Services Department, but by this body, but also to make sure that when we have a city that people from all backgrounds at all income levels are going to be able to live in and continue working in and continue growing and thriving, because that's the kind of Boston I think we have today, we're in danger of losing that a little bit, and I think that's something that we need to make sure this body continues to take a stand on and that the city continues to make sure we are a place for everyone. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Zagan. Before I assign this docket to remain in the committee, I want to recognize a former councilor of the Boston City Council, someone who, in his tenure here, whom I served with, was always an advocate for those in, around, in and around affordable housing, creating jobs for those who have been disadvantaged, Councilor Chuck Turner. No. I'm out of line here. Yes. Yeah, dockets 0362 and 0363.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 0362, order for hearing to review the fiscal year 2013 audit of financial statements, and docket number 0363, order for hearing to review the fiscal year 2014 budget.
Our chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight, Councilor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm going to ask that these matters be remanded back to committee. Before doing so, I just want to thank the administration for their cooperation with the Post Audit and Oversight Committee. To date, we have reviewed more than 80% of the city's finances for fiscal year 13 and fiscal year 14. And parenthetically, Mr. President, in looking at the city's debt-incurring capacity, for example, as of June 30, 2013, the city has a debt-incurring capacity of $3.5 billion. That's over and above what we're currently borrowing, just for your information, Mr. President. So I ask that both matters be referred back to committee, and again, I thank the administration and each department head for their cooperation. We're pretty close to concluding our hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Yancey. Thank you for your tenacity on behalf of all council members on the Post Audit and Oversight Committee. Docket 0362 and 0363 will remain in the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight. Madam Clerk, could you read 1551 through 1555?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1551, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and extend supplemental funding of $611,174 for the FY11 and FY14 Community-Based Violence Prevention Demonstration Project grant from the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, which will be used to implement evidence-based strategy that will positively impact violent crime trends. Docket number 1552, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and extend a grant of $492,334 from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Funds for the FY14 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for the Boston Police Department for the purposes of supporting crime prevention and law enforcement. Docket number 1553, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and extend a supplemental grant of $375,000 from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance funded under the FY11 and FY14 Smart Policing Evidence-Based Law Enforcement Grant Program. Docket number 1554, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and extend a grant of $306,731 from the U.S. Department of Justice FY14 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction Program. Docket number 1555, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and extend a grant of $222,200 of the FY12 and FY14 demonstration programs continuation from the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention used to support the development enhancement of the youth violence prevention program.
Our chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Councilor Murphy, on dockets 1551 through 1555.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Safety held a hearing on these dockets yesterday, October the 21st at 4:00 p.m. The chair is moving passage of all five dockets at this time. Docket 1551 was an increase to an original award amount of $2,200,000, an increase of $611,174 from the federal government for the Boston Community-Based Violence Prevention Demonstration Project, which was awarded originally in 2011, and the passage of this grant will allow it to continue through federal fiscal year FY14. It covers personnel, travel, consultants, and contracts, uses strategy of social-based norms campaign of non-tolerance towards violence, targets youth shooters, impact players, to put them on a different track, based mostly in Matapan. It partners with BCYF and Youth Options Unlimited and the Boston Public Health Commission. So it is a extension of work we've been doing. Docket 1552, the Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant, in the amount of $492,334, funds four domestic violence advocates and one domestic violence analyst. Advocates will work in districts B2, B3, C11, and E13. This is the 10th year Boston has applied for and received this grant. Docket 1553, Boston Homicide Clearance Rate Improvement Project Grant, in the amount of $375,000, was increased from the original award amount of just under $500,000, funds research and implementation programs for difficult-to-solve homicides. The grant will last 18 months and will examine whether additional and consistent investigative efforts increase the likelihood that an offender is arrested in serious assaultive gun violence. This grant complements Boston's Smart Policing Initiative. It's a homicide clearance grant. Docket 1554 is FY14 Forensic DNA Backlog Reduction Grant, in the amount of $306,731. It supports two full-time forensic positions, thus allowing the Boston Police Department to meet caseload demands through 2016 and reduce the current backlog. There are currently seven DNA forensic positions at the Boston Police Lab. This funds two of them. Docket 1555, the Boston National Forum Capacity Building Grant Continuation, in the amount of $222,200, is an increase to the current award amount of $170,000. Boston is one of the original six cities participating in the National Forum on Youth Violence Prevention. This grant will help Boston to address the mayor's six priority areas in terms of youth violence prevention. Those are gun violence prevention, substance abuse and mental health, trauma, reentry, human trafficking, and job readiness and meaningful employment. The Boston Police Department partners with Boston Public Schools. This funding is expected to last through September of 2015, and I'm recommending passage on dockets 1551 through 1555 at this time.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1551. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1551 has been passed. Councilor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1552. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1552 has been passed. Councilor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1553. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1553 has been passed. Councilor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1554. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1554 has been passed. And Councilor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1555. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1555 has been passed. At this time, by request of, and in agreement of three councilors, they asked that we take something out of order, and I'm going to grant that wish, and it's a matter from the green sheets. And so, yep, Councilor Siomo, you have the floor.
Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk, would you read that, please?
Page 14 of 14 in the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 0180, sponsored by Councilor Yancey. Order for a loan of $120 million for planning, designing, acquiring land for, constructing, and originally equipping structures and facilities, and for remodeling, reconstructing, or making major alterations, additions, and major repairs to existing facilities, including original equipment and landscaping, including the planting of shade trees and paving of other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, construction, or repair for the purpose of the school department, high school, and Matapan. This matter was referred to the committee on January 15, 2014. A hearing was held on October 7, 2014.
Councilor Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing at Matapan Library on Tuesday, October 7. It was a very well-attended hearing. Many people from the community spoke in support of Councilor Yancey's proposal, and let me thank him for delaying today's first vote so I had a chance to actually submit a committee report with the recommendation. Just a little background, over the past four to five years, we've made some very difficult votes in this chamber. It involved appropriations, pathways to excellence, which actually closed a school in my district, the Hamilton School. It merged the Garfield School with the Edison to make it a K through eight. It transformed the former Garfield into a, an extension of the Mary Lyons Inclusion School to include a high school there. Then we went forward with access to excellence, and I think at that point, things reached a real head in this chamber, especially around the moving of Mission K through eight to the Agassi School and making room for the Fenway High School to come to the Mission K through eight. And at that time, I, along with almost everybody that was here at this time, advocated... And at that time, I, along with almost everybody that was here at this time, advocated for a comprehensive look at the facility needs, at the capacity needs, and the requirements, educational requirements that we're trying to achieve. So in last year's budget, this body approved a $1.4 million study of a facilities master plan to look at the entire system and the facilities' needs, and we know there are many facility needs throughout our school system, and many students are attending schools in somewhat substandard facilities. And I know that you'll hear that 4,000 students right now attend high school in what were not originally built at high schools, and I'd say between 1,000 to 1,200 of those seats are in my district. The former Taft Middle School is now the site of the ACC, another course to college, as well as Boston Green Academy. Now, right across the street from the Taft, the former Taft School, is the Brighton High School, and if I was a parent with high school-age kids, which they're beyond high school now, and I went and just based my choice on physical appearance and facilities, and I went into the Brighton High School, which was built as a high school, and then went to the former Taft across the street, I would undoubtedly choose the former Taft School. It has all the facilities of a high school, wasn't built as a high school, but has been renovated recently. So I would say it is a less substandard building for those students. So getting back to my main point, this body advocated for that study, and before we continue to appropriate especially large sums of money to build new facilities, especially at the high school level, because we don't have the enrollment now, we have excess seats in high school right now, I would ask that this body wait for this study to be conducted so that we can take a comprehensive approach. And let me disclose by saying, I absolutely want to see us build new facilities for the students of our city. They deserve it, our families deserve it, but we have so many outstanding facilities' needs that do we want to take those resources at this particular point before we have the benefit of a thoughtful, comprehensive study and not address those needs before that study is complete? So I am asking my colleagues to vote yes to accept my committee report, which will not assign this matter for further action. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Siomo. Councilor Yancey?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First, I want to thank the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee. I think he conducted a great hearing at the Matapan Branch Library on October 7. What he said was accurate, it was a packed hearing. Not one person testified against this proposal. Everyone who spoke supported it, including the longest-serving member of the Boston School Committee, Alfreda Harret, including Linda Cabral, a retired headmaster of High Park High, including Albie Holland, a past headmaster in the Boston School System and current interim headmaster. He's recently pulled out of retirement to try to stabilize things at the Madison Park High School. Well-respected individuals. But not only that, Mr. Chairman, 10 years ago, we had similar discussions, and there was a letter from the then-Boston Public School Chief Operating Officer, someone by the name of Michael Contonpassus. Some of you may remember the name. He became a superintendent of schools, he was former headmaster of Boston Latin School. This is his statement 10 years ago. "The city of Boston strongly supports the construction of a new high school in the Matapan neighborhood. A Matapan High School will relieve pressure on existing facilities, enhance geographic diversity of a high school location. The Boston State Hospital site is an ideal location in terms of service areas and potential available acreage." Not my words, Michael Contonpassus's words. Mr. President, I could go on and on and on, as you know. This has been supported by the NAACP, by the Black Educators Alliance of Massachusetts, more than 3,000, I have them here, you can check the names, I can make copies if you like, 3,000 signatures on petitions to build this high school. Many people who signed this petition are no longer with us today. So are we going to ask schoolchildren to wait another two years before we even take a vote on this? It's not fair. The children of Boston have been deprived for too long. We've had many opportunities to debate this, we've had countless hearings, and the answer is always, let's wait, and there's one excuse after another for waiting. But who's paying the price for waiting, Mr. President? I want to thank many of the leaders who are here today, including Reverend Ron Odom and Reverend Kim Odom and Reverend Priscilla Flint and Rita Dixon and Brother Lo and Brother Charles, and all you folks who have been fighting for this community for years. And Councilor Turner, thank you so much for being here. My time is limited because I want to respect my colleagues' time. But since the last time we were asked to wait, what has happened? Taunton completed a high school, exit agricultural and technical high, Quincy High completed a high school, Malden High, Methuen High, West Springfield High, North High, Franklin High, Garfield High, Duxbury High, Southbridge High, North Reading High School, Somerset Berkeley High, Marshville High, Newton North High School. Mr. President, there are 30, no, I'm sorry, there are 65 high schools on this list provided by Massachusetts School Building Authority. They completed the building of new high schools after replacing high schools which were built since the last time we built a high school in 1979. Our children are first-class students, they deserve first-class facilities. If we wait till yet another study, then we may be in the same quandary that we're in today 20 years from now, because a comprehensive study was completed in 1996, and the announcement was that the city needed to build two new high schools. Two! How many did we build since that time? Zero. Zero. So what happened to the children? They were put in elementary school buildings, they were put in the basement of the YWCA on Cleveland Street, they were put in commercial buildings. Mr. President, the children of Boston, the current and future children of Boston, deserve at least one state-of-the-art high school built in the 21st century. The parents at Latin Academy have been crying for improvements in that building, and that's the same building I graduated from in high school. It was Boston Technical High School, the same school that the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee graduated from, and the same school that my mother graduated from, and the same school that Dabo O'Neal graduated from. I could go on and on, but let me just conclude by asking us not to delay this, and there's really no reason to delay, because after the City Council takes its first reading today, we have to wait two weeks to take the second reading, and then after we approve, or hopefully approve the second reading, it's turned over to the mayor. The mayor has total discretion whether to sign it or not to sign it, or after signing it, delay until the actual construction begins. I'm going to prod him to build immediately, of course, but it will be in his hands, he has more than adequate time. The experts have spoken, the President of the BTU supports this, as well as countless others. Most of all, I want to thank my two co-sponsors, Councilor Murphy and the Chair of the Education Committee. Now, we know that this is financially feasible, there has never been a question at any of those hearings here or elsewhere. This has been the most thoroughly researched high school project in the recent history of the city of Boston since 1984. There has never been as much attention to detail than this project or any other high school or any school building that this body approved. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm urging that we take a first reading and assign this for further action and to reject the recommendation of the Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Yancey. Just for clarification, so that you all know, that if you vote yes, you are supporting the recommendation of the Chair, which is to have it not further assigned for further action, okay? So if you vote yes, it will not have further action. If you vote no, you're voting for further action, and it takes two votes over a two-week period for that to be affirmed and then moved on to the mayor's office to his debt. So Matt? Oh, okay. Councilor Baker?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I rise today to stay with the position that I had two weeks ago, which was, I do not disagree with Council Yancey. I would personally like to see that facilities plan, I would like to hear the administration, where they are on this, they haven't been here a year, I would like to have buy-in from the administration, I'd like to see the facilities plan before I'm prepared to support this. Thank you. So I will be voting yes.
Thank you for that, Councilor Baker. Councilor Siomo, did you have something to say in closing?
For the clerk to poll the committee.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, would you please poll the committee?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the Committee on Ways and Means, the Chair, Council Siomo.
Hold on one second, just for clarification, because I just explained a different vote, and I think I don't want to confuse them. If you're voting yes, that's to bring this matter forward for a vote. Okay? So this, sorry, I'm being as clear as I can be to the members of the Boston City Council, okay?
Yes.
Again, I don't want, I'll explain, okay? You are voting now to pull out this matter so that it can have a vote, right, in front of the body, and we are polling the Ways and Means Committee members. If you want this to be voted today, you'll vote in the affirmative. Madam Clerk?
Council Baker. Council Siomo, I'm sorry, you have the chair.
Yes.
Council Wu as vice-chair. Council Flaherty. Council Jackson. Council Murphy. Council O'Malley. It's a unanimous vote for it, to bring this matter properly before the body.
Okay. The matter is properly before the body, and I'll reiterate it one more time. A yes vote supports the report of the Chair, which is to have no further action. A no vote supports Council Yancey's position, and that is to have further action. Are we all clear? Okay, madam. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the matter will be assigned for further action. Madam Clerk, we're doubting the vote, and we'll have a roll-call vote. Yeah, go ahead. I will recommend in the future that the Chair's report be in a more simple and concise presentation so that we can all feel comfortable in understanding the votes as we move forward. So again, we're going to have a roll-call vote. This is, this roll-call vote is yes if you support the Chair's recommendation, no if you do not support it. If you do not support the Chair's recommendation, then this is the first reading of the matter. Council Yancey? No, I'm not asking?
Okay. I understand what you're saying.
Okay, great. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Council Baker. Council Siomo. Council Siomo, yes, and Council Baker, yes. Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, no. Council Jackson. Council Jackson, no. Council Lamontina. Council Linehan.
Yes.
Council Linehan, yes. Council McCarthy. Council McCarthy, no. Council Murphy. Council Murphy, no. Council O'Malley. Council O'Malley, no. Council Presley. Council Presley, no. Council Wu. Council Wu, no. Council Yancey.
No.
Council Yancey, no. And Council Zachem.
Mr. President, oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, could you give me those numbers again? I was interrupting.
There is a, Mr. President, there is a nine to three vote. Not supporting.
There are nine votes in the negative, three votes in the positive, and this matter will be moved forward for its second reading in a meeting two weeks from now. Thank you very much. I'm going to, at this time, I'd like to ask that we all have a quick executive session. It's on an administrative matter that has occurred to all of you. I just want to coordinate that administrative matter, and we'll do that in the Curly Room right now, so we're at an executive session. Take us five, 10 minutes, and we'll be back in session. The council will be back in session after an executive session that was held in the Curly Room. For the record, the clerk was in attendance, and she took and recognized who was present, the time of the meeting, and comments that were made. Motions, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk? Motions, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1607, Counsel Murphy and Counsel President Linehan offer the following order for hearing regarding the leadership and financial affairs of the Boston Public Library.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy on the docket 1607.
Came to light last week by the Rich Weir and the Boston Herald doing an expose on the Boston Public Library system. And I ordered, following up on that revelation that was put out in the paper about the fact that a system which, basically this body saved from ruin in 2010, found itself more in the money than they thought, and decided, the trustees of the library decided to give a performance bonus to the President of the library. And I think there's a city charter question here that needs to be answered. And, you know, we, this body appropriated 38 million-plus funds for the B, Boston Public Library for FY '15, and there were external funds for 8 million more. And the President of the Public Library is an employee of the Mayor of Boston, as are the Board of Trustees appointed by the Mayor, but all of whom remain accountable to the taxpayers of Boston. And there is only one way in my mind to fund a public department that taxpayers use, and that is through the offices of the Boston City Council. It's why we take our budgetary duties so seriously. I look at the, the Public Library budget that the City Council passed, and it says that the President has a salary of $180,967 in the last FY budget. That's the appropriation of the salary for President. It's not $200,000. It's not an extra 20 or an extra 30, or whatever the Chair or the trustees deems fit. It's what this body gives it. Unless, of course, we have a shadow government operating over there, and we have another way for people, unbeknownst to me, to get public funds and put them into a salary. And I think that's the larger conversation that we have to have in this hearing. I remember in, in 2010, four public branch libraries were closing because of a line item in the state budget that had been gone on for like 30 years. It was the library of last recourse, and it was millions of dollars funneled to the Boston Public Library as the identified library of last recourse. And the State House eliminated that line item, and it was the previous administration's decision because that lifeline of money wasn't coming in to, in fact, close four branches of libraries. And we all were besieged by the people that are public library champions, and especially in those neighborhoods, to keep those branches open. And we collectively, creatively, found a way, gained $18 million in interest savings on Convention Center bonds, and funneled it to the Public Library, not so that they could give themselves bonuses over. They're not General Motors, and they're not Wall Street. They're the Boston Public Library. They're funded through this process here, and they've got to be accountable to taxpayers. And the thing that bothered me most was reading the story in the paper, and the Chairman of the Library puffering, puffering wise, saying, "Oh, she's worth every nickel, and I'm proud to give her every nickel I can." Of taxpayer money? Who elected you, Mr. Library Chair? You have no authority to give taxpayer money, at least not in my mind, not in this world. And Amy Ryan saying, "It's important that I do a good job to the trustees. Show the trustees that I'm working hard." What about the taxpayers? What about the Mayor? What about the members of this body? You are a publicly paid person that runs a department of this city. And for you to ignore the elected officials and ignore the process by which your salary is saved and say in the paper, "Oh gee, no, it's, it's not. I've got to keep the trustees happy." Well, if the trustees do have this authority, if we find out, then maybe we have to go to the Mayor and go to the Legislature and get that thing stopped, because it's operating outside of the boundaries of where public policy should operate. It's operating in the shadows. And that's why the public hearing here will be so important. We'll ask our own Corporation Council to come in and give us legal advice and not political advice. And we'll ask the CFO of the City of Boston to come in and, and give us the financial picture there. And we'll ask the CFO of the library to come in, the Chair of the Board of Trustees, and the Library President, and defend this practice in, in the lights and in the heat of this chamber. I think it's a good starting point to have a conversation that, in my opinion, is overdue. I want to thank the President for signing on with me. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counsel Linehan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And thank you, Counsel Murphy, for bringing this important matter forward. And your articulations here today are right on spot. I'm glad that you asked me to co-sponsor this with you, and I think it's kind of a fundamental matter. And that you raised the issue of charter reform, I think is, again, appropriate. There are so many functions that have gone on in a city for so long that don't, that don't give the taxpayer and the voter the opportunity to weigh in on matters of extreme financial concern. I remember that period well, when we were going to close libraries. And, and I also remember the employees of the library, the Afsmi union members, who all, in a contract that was already negotiated, said that they would not take their due increase so that the libraries could sustain. But, one year later, five, six, seven years in a row, five years in a row now, the President has received a $20,000 bonus. Ironically, it's the same amount of money that we're looking for, and we haven't had something in 10 years, you know? Will be 10 years. So, I'm glad that you bring this forward. I think it's, it's incumbent upon us that, that we all come to this hearing and find out what's going on at the BPO, see what the trustees are up to. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Yancey?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the Maker and the co-sponsor of this order. And to say that this reminds me of some other issues that we faced in the mid-1980s. When I was going through the personnel files, as all of you know I do on a regular basis, I discovered at least one city employee was getting salaries from two different locations. And I think that created some concern, so much so that the administration at that time corrected the problem. Now, this is not totally analogous to that, of course, but it does raise the question that I ask the current administration to consider. And that is, for some reason, the administration has not provided that comprehensive personnel information to me for the first time in 30 years. And I think it's useful just to maintain the transparency that I know he wants to achieve, and to ensure that this body has information that it needs to do its job, particularly with regards to our fiduciary responsibility. So again, I commend the Maker of this. I ask that my name be added. And I thank you, Mr. President, for signing on. And I'd like to sign on as well.
Madam Clerk, thank you, Counsel Yancey. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Yancey's name. And that matter will be assigned to the Committee on Post-Audits and Oversight. Madam Clerk, 1608.
Docket number 1608, Counsel Presley offers the following order for hearing to identify solutions to ensure equitable transitions of Boston Public School students receiving special education services.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Presley on docket 1608.
Thank you, Mr. President. We speak often of the need to ensure that our district students are well-prepared, and there's a readiness for college, for workforce, for life. And I just want to put this hearing forward so that we can better understand whether or not we are doing everything that we can to ensure that there is equitable access in these strategies, in these plans, and that we are ensuring that our SPED students are being given the same opportunities for mentorship, for partnership, that we are just as committed to developing for internships, that we are just as committed to developing those pipelines for them. Everyone deserves the best chance and supports, not only to be competitive in college and in life, in our workforce, but to contribute. And so I'm hoping at this hearing, we will better understand what are the guidelines? Are we in compliance? What is working that can be strengthened? Where are there gaps? And just for the purposes of the record, there are some things that I want to extract from the hearing order. Approximately 4,500 of our students, our SPED students, are between the ages of 14 and 22. The transition from high school to post-secondary schooling, employment, or living is a critical juncture for every student. For students with disabilities, extra planning may be required to develop and prepare for the optimal transition, whether it be further education, vocational skills, independent living, employment. For undocumented immigrant students with disabilities, transition planning creates additional challenges that require special attention. Again, we speak very often about our SPED population and the need to be inclusive and mainstream. And I want to make sure that we are considering that across the spectrum. I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge the leadership of the SPED PAC, the incredible work, the example that they set in parental engagement, education, empowerment, and advocacy. I thank them for pushing all of us to do more and to do better when it comes to our SPED students. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley on docket 1608. Docket 1608 is assigned to the Committee on, oh, I'm, sorry. Counsel O'Malley, I saw your hand raised. Absolutely. Counsel O'Malley would like to have his name added. Anybody else? Counsel Wu, Counsel Yancey, Counsel Jackson, Counsel McCarthy? Thank you. And that, that matter will be assigned to the Committee on Education.
Docket number 1609, Counsel McCarthy offers the following resolution that the City Council support, maintaining the adjustment of the state's gas tax based on Consumer Price Index in order to provide funding to make necessary improvements to the roads and bridges located in Boston.
The Chair recognizes Counsel McCarthy on docket 1609.
As a former employee of the Boston Public Works Department for seven years, my desk was located up in the Engineering Division. I have a great understanding of how badly our roads and bridges are and their need in repair, especially in Boston. Boston is, as you know, the economic engine of Massachusetts. There are presently 51 structurally deficient bridges in Boston. Some are a lot worse than others. The gas tax is the only mandated, is, is the only tax that is mandated by the Commonwealth to go directly to fund transportation infrastructure. In addition to roads and bridges, the money can be used for all modes of transportation, including trains, buses, and bicycles, bike lanes. We have an aging infrastructure, and any delays can have catastrophic effects on the vitality of our city, its visitors, and our residents. In addition to the bridges, the need for upgrades in the MBTA is paramount keeping Boston a world-class city. Consider the implication on planned transportation, road and bridge investment, and how those jobs could be affected. The cost of the repairs will rise exponentially if this passes. The Transportation Finance Act is projected to raise an average of 600 million per year for the next five years, and an estimated cost to maintain the current system without new and necessary expansions would cost 15 to 20 billion over the next 20 years. This loss in revenue, should this pass, would jeopardize transportation improvement projects and repairs to Boston roads and bridges for decades. Tax is never an easy topic. I'm not a big fan of them myself. But crippling the infrastructure further is not enough. I urge this honorable body to vote no on question one.
Counsel Jackson, you have to, thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Jackson?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to commend the work of the author. This is the right thing to do. And if you have any question about whether or not this is the right thing to do, let's think about the 700 residents who are no longer able to go to Long Island Shelter. Let's think about the young people who will have an issue getting to Camp Harbor View next, next summer because of a bridge that's dilapidated and dangerous. Literally dangerous. And if anyone has been over the bridge, it is, it is dangerous. And that important infrastructure is something that we need to maintain. And in fact, we should never allow any bridge or road to fall into that level of disrepair. And as someone who has worked on it on the front lines, and I actually really appreciate having conversations with Counsel McCarthy, because he's, he's literally been there around all of these issues. We have to, as, as a city, and for the economy of the city of Boston, continue to keep up our infrastructure if we're going to continue to lead, and if we're going to continue to be the economic engine of not only the state of Massachusetts, but really New England. And that's where, that's where we lead. And so it is critical that we index these costs, and that we, we vote no. And this is one of, one of the confusing aspects this year, ladies and gentlemen, is that, Mr. President, most of the times, well, most of the questions are counterintuitive in terms of which way you vote. This would be a, a no vote to support the continuation of this tax that would give us the opportunity to get funding, to, to keep up the significant and important infrastructure that keeps the city of Boston going. I, I want to, again, compliment the, the author. I'd like to sign on and look forward to supporting this measure.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Please add Counsel Jackson's name. Please add the Chair's name. Counsel Frank Baker's name. Counsel Mark Ciomo's name. Counsel Presley's name. Counsel Wu's name. Counsel Yancey's. Buttons are working like crazy, yeah. Counsel McCarthy moves suspension. Oh, I'm sorry, when you put your hand up, I thought you... Counsel Zachem?
Thank you.
Hold on one second, just out of order. So, when, when you put your hand up, right, and, and say that you want it to be added, then I assume that was the conclusion. So Counsel Wu was next in line.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Sorry, I had pushed my button too early, and then eagerly signed on as well. I was just so excited. I wanted to thank Counsel McCarthy for, for bringing this up and, and bringing this forward. I'm a strong no on question one as well, and really glad that the council can officially express our voice on the matter. Echoing Counsel Jackson's remarks, this is a public safety concern, but even more than that, it is a concern about economic development. It's construction jobs, it's infrastructure, but it's also whether our residents can get to work easily, whether people want to live in and near the Boston area so that they can get to jobs that are available, whether businesses want to locate in our city. So I'm very proud to support this, or to, to be on the no side of this, to support maintaining the indexing. And also just want to emphasize that we're not legislating anything new here. This is about reinforcing the work that the Legislature already did with great discussion and with great consideration of the funding that's needed to maintain our roads and bridges over time. So, again, I'm signing on now and look forward to voting in the affirmative.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Counsel Zachem?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be clear, I do want to sign on to this resolution. But I also want to complement Counsel McCarthy on bringing this forward. I think it's so important that as, by far the largest city in the Commonwealth, Boston, through this body, makes our voice heard on these important issues. My colleagues have already spoken very effectively to the concrete impacts, not to make a pun there, but the impacts of transportation funding in the city, whether it's the bridge to Long Island that is in disrepair, whether it's the crumbling roads, highways, bridges, really across the Commonwealth, but also in the city of Boston, that I personally get calls on, emails on, text messages on, on a daily basis. We need to do everything we can to make sure... We need to do everything we can to make sure that the Commonwealth has the necessary funds to make those repairs and to make sure the city and the state is ready for the 21st century. So thank you, Council McCarthy, for bringing this forward. I look forward to passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Zakim. At this time, Council McCarthy moves suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1609. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 1609 has been adopted.
Docket number 1610, Council Baker offered the following order for hearing regarding mixed-use development proposals for Boston Public Branch Libraries.
Chair recognizes Council Baker on docket 1610.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, what I'd like to say is this idea has nothing to do with trying to privatize libraries or that would possibly put workers in jeopardy of losing their jobs. With that being said, today I rise to file an order for a hearing to review and discuss the opportunities for sustainability of the Boston Public Branch Libraries through mixed-use development proposals. Back in May, I spoke of this idea at the Public Libraries Fiscal Hearing for 2015. I'm interested in researching the idea of renovating libraries to serve multiple functions, like combining libraries with affordable housing for seniors. As you all may know, municipalities are often faced with funding shortfalls such as shortfalls... such shortfalls force municipalities to make difficult decisions when it comes to cuts. And oftentimes, we find our public libraries on the chopping blocks. It was only a few years ago when Lower Mills Library in my district in Dorchester was slated for closure due to fiscal constraints. Mixed-use Boston Public Libraries may solve several issues that impact our neighborhoods: lack of fiscal resources for our libraries, lack of housing opportunities, lack of viable commercial spaces for our small business, and the need to create innovative, multi-use shared workspaces. In St. Paul, Minnesota, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, San Francisco, California, King County, Washington, Dallas, Texas, and Portland, Oregon have all taken out-of-the-box approaches to stabilizing, repurposing, and expanding their... and reintegrating these public entities to serve their communities. In Portland, Oregon, the Hollywood Public Library houses several floors of housing, while the first floor holds a library and a coffee shop. This model has opted to develop the project, keeping in line with efforts to advance green, environmentally innovative designs and in urban areas. It has received several awards for green technology and livability. In San Francisco, Mission Creek Library accommodates senior housing, commercial space, and a community center. This model has brought vibrancy and inclusion to its senior residences. In St. Paul, the Rondo Branch Library System was built in 2006. It combines 98 affordable units with a branch library. The city found a corner lot in an area that has many working-class immigrant and student residents. It surveyed the surrounding neighborhood's residents about what they would like to see in the new branch. The survey showed that the residents wanted a library with lots of classroom for ESL and other classes, and this is what they received. The building was combined with 98 mostly affordable housing units with a garage underneath. Boston Public Libraries have an opportunity to adapt these models to fit the need of both the library and the communities through public-private partnerships. Libraries continue to evolve as centers of community gathering and learning. Rather than continue to attempt to combat fiscal shortfalls, we can look to what has worked in other municipalities and apply those practices in Boston where appropriate. I know that all the libraries in my district need significant attention, and I'm looking forward to a hearing to discuss this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Baker. Council Wu.
Thank you, Mr. President. I couldn't agree more with Council Baker and see this as an issue citywide. It's clear, we all know that the libraries in our districts are about much more than the books on the shelves. It's about the space that's created for youth programming and seniors and the community to come in. This is about recognizing the reality of living in a dense city where land values are now skyrocketing while still making sure that we are providing those centers of community for residents to be able to stay and truly make the community their own. I want to put in a special plug for the Chinatown Library to be at least part of the consideration for this, as we are, especially in that neighborhood, dealing both with affordable housing challenges, expensive prices for new buildings, and so this could be a potential way to think about a solution. So please add my name to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Wu. Council Jackson.
Mr. President, please add my name. This is an excellent idea. I think we... in many ways, people assume that innovation and disruptive technology is our counterintuitive with the concept of libraries. But in fact, as Council Baker brought up, it's exactly what we should be doing. We should really be thinking about how we combine these with projects like they have, and I'm going to add to your list, in Washington, D.C., where they've actually used as a community benefit, a give-back from developers, a mixed-use facility, and actually built a library right next to it. It's something that we definitely need to think about. And we also need to think about libraries as not only places that people get books, but we live in a day and age, Mr. President, where almost every retailer requires you to apply for a job online. And we know that the digital divide is still alive and well in many parts of the city, and this is one of the primary areas that people in many communities actually access the Internet. And so it is absolutely critical that we think of a sustainable way to keep our libraries alive if we want our communities to thrive, if we want to close the opportunity gap, and we want to put people back to work and give them opportunities. This is a really great way, and I want to applaud Council Baker's innovative disruptive thinking. He's never known to be disruptive in this body, but his thinking that will allow us to think out of the box for something that we've had in our city for a long time. We have to continue to evolve. We have to continue to innovate when it comes to basic city services, and Council Baker is leading the way in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Please add Council Jackson's name, add my name, please. Madam Clerk, add Council Murphy's, Council O'Malley's, Council Zakim's, Council Pressley's, and Council Yancey, you have the floor.
Did you want it to go? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Let me say publicly that I do not disagree with Council Baker on this. In fact, I commend him. It's a great idea. It's well-needed. And it's one of the things that makes me so proud of the current Boston City Council, not that I haven't been proud in the past, because I have, but it's really refreshing to see the many innovative ideas that are coming out of this body. It's also interesting that this body can think well on its feet and independently make recommendations. And I think this is an excellent idea. And I agree with Council Wu that Chinatown is a prime candidate for this type of development. I would add to that list Jamaica Plain and Uppens Corner. One of the risks of being successful in terms of promoting new ideas on this body is that folks from other parts of the city, you know, beat the trail to your office. And that certainly has been the case with Chinatown, with folks in Jamaica Plain and Uppens Corner, that really long overdue in terms of having a state-of-the-art library. Now, unfortunately, Council La Martina is not with us today, but he has an excellent... there's an excellent library in East Boston, it's well-used. The new library in Matta Penn is the home of the Alice W. Yancey Community Meeting Room thanks to this body, voting for that. And thank you, Mr. President. Every day, there's activity in that community room and throughout the library. There are dozens of computers at work at all hours. You have excitement in the young adult room and within the children's library, within that particular library, and we even have a nice atrium for folks to sit and relax. So I say all that to say that I would like to have my name added to this proposal made by Council Baker. Thank you very much.
I thank you, Council Yancey. Council Pressley.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate that. Council Baker, I too just want to commend you for your leadership and also for stating at the outright that this is not about privatization or about jobs lost. Thank you for making that point, because in fact, this is not about divestment, but this is about investment. My freshman term on the City Council was an incredible education and at times felt like a hazing. We had some very contentious issues before the body in our first term, in my first term, one of them being library closures. And although it was a, you know, a gut-wrenching situation to see sacred cows like libraries being threatened at all, it was heartening as a citywide council, as someone... you know, we all love this entire city, you know, regardless of what neighborhood you live in, you know, district or at large, that the entire city came together, whether their neighborhood's library was being threatened or not, that everyone came together and said no. So I do just want to say, in that this is National Friends Week, I do want to acknowledge all the friends groups of our libraries for the incredible work that they do. And it is a system that is currently imbalanced. There are some groups that are able to raise more money than others, but we know that there is, you know, a great and growing need. So I commend Council Baker for putting this forward. Again, thank you for underscoring this is not about privatization or displacing of any jobs, just a critical investment that we're long overdue for, just to think creatively about how to ensure that our libraries can continue to be centers and havens for people and that play a role in building healthy community. The last thing that I would say, I'm looking forward to the hearing, and I think I've already added my name, is that it's just really critical that whatever happens moving forward, that there is a community process, that the community is an empowered partner in the visioning. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pressley. Council Pressley's name has been added, but please also add Council Sielmo's and Council So Councilor... docket 1610 is assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor.
Docket number 1611, Council Yancey offered the following order for hearing to examine the response plans and procedures in the city of Boston regarding Ebola.
Chair recognizes Council Yancey on docket 1611.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Sadly, I don't need to spend a whole lot of time on the necessity of having this particular hearing to determine the readiness of the city of Boston to deal with the tragedy of Ebola. I pray that no one in this city contracts that disease. However, prudence requires that we at least ask the question now whether or not we're prepared to deal with this emergency. We've had a couple of close calls at Logan Airport, as all of you know, and thankfully there's no one in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with the Ebola virus. But what if that happens today, tomorrow, or next week? Will our nurses and doctors and other first responders, our EMS, be prepared? I'd like to... I know it's a dismal topic, but it's our responsibility to protect the people of Boston. So I'd like to ask that this hearing ought to be passed in that we have an expeditious hearing so we can bring all the parties before us. I know that the state has convened hearings on this topic, certainly the United States Congress has as well. But as the home of the most world-renowned medical institutions, it's our responsibility as a legislative branch of the city of Boston to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that we are in fact prepared to respond to a possible emergency and not to unnecessarily expose our first responders unless they're fully prepared. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Yancey. Council Jackson.
I just wanted to rise to ask to be... to sign on, but also I want to compliment Council Yancey for his work in particular on the bio lab and on keeping the city safe. He has been a leader in that space, and I would just add that in addition to the thoughts of what would happen in the city of Boston if someone sadly were to be infected coming in on a plane, we also have a unique situation in the city of Boston where Level 4 agents could possibly be... well, they are slated to be tested here in the city of Boston. And so I think we also, in that hearing, need to, again, bring in the folks from the needle and Boston University to discuss this issue of safety and what would happen in the event that someone were to contract or be exposed to Ebola in their facility, or and also what is a quarantine area and things of that nature that would come up. The other thing is also, we need to respect the Mass Nurses Association and also others in our community who have expertise here. From what I've heard, many of these organizations have not had a full seat at the table. We need to bring everybody who has expertise in this space to the table so we have a comprehensive response. None of the responders or response algorithms work if people don't have a seat at the table, if they don't understand them, and they're not fully on board. It's absolutely important that we bring them to the table. So again, I want to thank Council Yancey for his leadership in this space and look forward to making sure that we have all of the safety that we need to prevent any exposure as well as the spread in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Please add Council Jackson's name to it. That matter will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety.
Docket number 1612, Council Jackson offered the following resolution that the Boston City Council support the use of bona fide employees of trashed collection companies within the city of Boston.
Chair recognizes Council Jackson on docket 1612.
Mr. President, we have some new contractors who are in the city of Boston. We know that in the past, we've used contractors who have had defined benefit packages like those who are members of Teamsters Local 25, but we also have some of the new contractors who are using temporary employees. I think when we look at standards, when we look at benefits, when we look at background checks, we want to make sure that all of the people who are being serviced by the city of Boston or as a contractor are on the up and up. And so it is absolutely critical that we put forward this message. I'm going to be pushing for suspension and adoption today on this matter. And so I think it's an important issue, it's a timely issue, and as we go forward, we definitely need to think about making sure that we have standards as well as the necessary background checks on everyone. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Council Baker.
Please sign on, please.
Please add Council Baker's name, Madam Clerk, Council McCarthy's name, Council Murphy's, Council O'Malley's, Council Pressley's, Council Wu, Council Yancey, Council Zakim, Council Sielmo, and please add my name, Madam Clerk. So everybody's name to this matter that is a resolution. Okay, let me finish this. Council Jackson moves suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1612. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1612 has been adopted. Madam Clerk, Council Pressley wanted her name added to the matter previous, 1611.
Yes.
Could you please do that? Thank you. And Madam Clerk, 1613.
Docket number 1613, Council Zakim and Murphy offer the following order for hearing regarding the Last Call Foundation and firefighters' safety.
Chair recognizes Council Zakim on docket 1613.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to explain this resolution. I want to thank Council Murphy for working on this with me and the Last Call Foundation and their leadership, specifically Kathy Crosby-Bell. This entire body attended the funerals earlier this year of a firefighter, Michael Kennedy and Lieutenant Edward Walsh, who, as we all know, passed away in the Back Bay Fire earlier this year. And the six and a half months now since that terrible incident, Kathy Crosby-Bell has really worked, done incredible work along with the Fire Department, with Commissioner Finn, with Local 718, and others to create this foundation. They've raised hundreds of thousands of dollars already, have already provided grants for study of ways to make firefighters safer through more... further fireproofing of the hoses that go into these fires. But really, what struck me the most, and we... and many of my colleagues joined me at the official launch, you yourself, Mr. President... the official launch, you yourself, Mr. President, were there, of the Last Call Foundation in the Back Bay last month, was the fact that the cancer rates for firefighters in the city of Boston are two and a half to three times higher than the general population. And that is a result of quite a few environmental conditions and, you know, work conditions at the Fire Department. But the focus of this foundation on improving firefighter safety, not just in the traditional sense that we think about, like the fire proposes, the equipment that's going into fighting a fire, but the long-term health care, you know, Commissioner Finn was talking about that that is their biggest challenge, that so many firefighters suffering from cancer in the city of Boston. So we are working with Councilor Murphy, want to make sure we have this hearing so that the Last Call Foundation, the Fire Department, and other interested parties are able to talk about what the city can do, how the city council, how the public at large can support this mission to make sure that those who protect us are protected, not just at the incidents, but, you know, over time to make sure that their health and safety is a top priority. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Zakim. Councilor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend Councilor Zakim for sponsoring this and allowing me to co-sponsor with him. Frankly, it's a no-brainer. Kathy Crosby lost her son, and she's trying, in her own way, to make sure that, number one, we don't forget him, and number two, that the folks that he leaves behind in those firehouses that work for us and work for the city are as safe as possible. And she's, it's a good purpose, and it's something that we should all support, and holding a hearing to publicize her efforts is a good thing, and that's what we intend to do. If it should go to public safety, we'll hold that hearing in the next few weeks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Councilor Yancey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Councilor Zakim and Councilor Murphy for putting this before us. We did hold a post-audit oversight hearing concerning the Fire Department. Of course, this subject came up concerning the fireproofing of hoses. And I've been in this business for a long time, but I always assumed that hoses were fireproofed, and they're not. So I asked the Fire Commissioner, a newly-appointed Fire Commissioner, what he thought of it. Obviously, he supports the idea, but he has cautioned that somehow fireproofing these hoses may reduce the capacity of the hose, which is not a desirable outcome either. So this research that's being conducted by the Kathy Crosby Bell Foundation, well, that's called Foundation, is very timely, very important, and could save lives, not only of our first responders in Boston, but all around the country. So I met my two colleagues, and I asked that my name be added.
Please, thank you, Councilor Yancey. Please add Councilor Yancey's name, Councilor Baker's name, Councilor Jackson's, Councilor McCarthy's name, Councilor O'Malley's name, Councilor Presley, Councilor Wu, and please add the chair's name, Councilor Sielmo's. We've all been added. Docket 1613 is assigned to the Committee on Public Safety.
Docket number 1614, Councilor Baker offered the following order for hearing regarding Boston City Charter and proposed revisions.
Chair recognizes Councilor Baker on docket 1614.
I'd add Councilor O'Malley as the original co-sponsor, please.
I'll be so done.
Thank you. As the chair of a special committee on charter reform, I would like to take this opportunity to have a hearing to discuss the current state of the Boston City Charter and the potential for amendments and/or revisions to it, quite apropos, I think, at this time. It is my understanding that the city charter has not been thoroughly reviewed since the White Administration. I think that with the new mayor in office, it might be a good time to consider possible changes to charter, whether minor or major. Over the years, the charter has been amended for several things, namely to change the membership makeup of the council to nine district councils and four at-large, and also to change the elected school committee to appointed school committee. It is my intention to have a listening hearing on this matter, then several working sessions in order to make the public, my colleagues, and the administration recommendations for amendments and revisions to hash out the details. So I'm looking forward to this process, to having a lively discussion regarding this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Baker. Councilor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend and thank my dear friend and colleague, the counselor from District 3, Councilor Baker, in his capacity as chair of this special committee, and I in my capacity as vice chair. We've already begun having conversations about some of the ideas, and I appreciate and echo his call for having a hearing and then a series of working sessions. There are a lot of substantive changes that can and ought to be made. It was very heartening after the election last year to hear our new mayor, then mayor-elect, talking about wanting a better partnership, working with this, the legislative body of the city of Boston. And I think there's a, this is a fine opportunity to look at the city charter, make some proposed changes, and have an opportunity not only to talk amongst ourselves and with the administration, but invite the public in too for a robust public process, take some good ideas, come up with some other collaborative approaches to looking at ways that we can make the charter work better for every Bostonian. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley. Please add my name to that matter, Councilor, I mean, Madam Clerk, and Councilor Sielmo's, Councilor McCarthy's, Councilor Presley, Councilor Wu, Councilor Yancey, Councilor Zakim, Councilor Jackson. That matter will be assigned to the Special Committee on Charter Reform. Before we go to late files, I just wanted to give folks an update. You all passed unanimously a commission formed in recognition of Ray Flynn, an appropriate way to present and represent him in the city. We had met last Wednesday, and 18 commission members met and are truly excited about working over the next 120, 150 days on resolving some, and submitting recommendations for an appropriate presentation for Ray Flynn. So it was just an update on the Ray Flynn Commission. Late files, Madam Clerk. I'm informed that there are two late-file matters in the hands of the clerk, which in absence of objection, will be added to today's agenda.
The first late-file matter offered by Mayor Martin J. Walsh on October 22, 2014, an order authorized the city of Boston to accept and extend the city of Boston's FY 2014 Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Program funds awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security.
That matter will be submitted to the Committee on Public Safety. Could you please read the second late-file matter?
Second late-file matter offered by Mayor Martin J. Walsh on October 16, 2014. I transmit therewith to the approval amendments to the city of Boston Code Ordinances, Chapter 2, 11, 14, 16, and 18. The purpose of these amendments is to facilitate the transfer of the Animal Control Unit from Property Management Department to the Inspection Services Department and to rename the unit the Animal Care and Control Unit. In addition, these amendments increase the penalties for failure to comply with requirements regarding a dangerous dog and update administrative process for dealing with complaints of dangerous dogs in the city of Boston. I urge your honorable body to act fearably on the proposed amendment without delay.
Just for clarification, Madam Clerk, you did read that there's code, change to code in that? Ordinance, yeah, okay, fine. So that will be submitted to the Committee on Government Operation. There are two late-file matters which in absence of objection will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing, hearing, no objections, the matters are added. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For the chair and Councilor Flaherty, Gerald Jesse Daley, Thomas P. Benton, Kathleen Flaherty, Michael M. Kenevy, Joan Lyden, Joseph M. Peano. And for Councilor, the chair, Councilor Lennyhan, Flaherty, and Baker, Stephanie Lovey Upstream. For Councilor Baker, James A. Verderico. For Councilor Sielmo, Joseph P. Champagne. For Councilor Murphy, Daniel Carley and John Loughlin. For Councilor Yancey, Mary Cooks, William L. Dickerson, Mamie L. Kind, Jamie Dolores Washington, Camille Dolores Washington, excuse me, Jane L., Janie L. Jeffrey. Moment of silence, please. Thank you, Councilor Presley. I'll set.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So the chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 29, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor, say aye of adjournment?
Aye.
And all those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is so adjourned.
All right. You see your floor.